I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames, here. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Curriely.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Right. I don't think the mics are.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sismarsky.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. Declare Coram President, please stand, join pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 7th, 2022.
So moved.
We had Alderman Sismarsky and Alderman Ames. Second. Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? You, sir? Did you want to speak?
Yeah, but I don't start on the agenda.
Right. That's it. No problem.
Take you three minutes and knock them out of the park.
Yes, sir. Chief, is the microphone on?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Reed Goodrich, and so my just a general comment. You know, they put some trees on our subdivision here a couple, three years ago. And while they might have been cheap, they're considered invasive Siberian elms. Now, I've already chatted with Ms. Mayor Police about this, and I just want to add some additional encouragement when you, you know, consider plants around town. You focus on, you know, using native plants, the ones that are in there now about like dandelions, and they really are not as beneficial to the environment, you know. Schaumburg has a native plant sale for their people. Wheaton does. Downers Grove goes strictly natives when they, you know, do their plants around town. So if I can, you know, add some support to that, that's what I'm here for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you said Siberian elms?
I'm sorry?
Siberian elms is what was put in?
Yeah, and they're too close together. I don't know who on your department, you know, did it, but it's going to be a problem.
Where's this located?
Royal Oaks.
Do we plant anything in Royal Oaks?
Any other citizens wish to address the council? Okay, I have no written communique. The mayor's report. Do have one. Okay. Tree City USA. In 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas the trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees for a renewable resource giving us paper wood for paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values and hence the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, on the Giato Police Mayor, City of Wood Dale, to hereby proclaim this day, we don't have the day in here, how come? July, I mean, July. What's our, April 29th, right? April 29th as Arbor Day in the City of Wood Dale, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. I urge, further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Next, city manager's report.
Only one item this evening. We do have some members of Fenton School District 100 here to do a brief presentation, so I'll just turn it over to them at the podium.
Mayor Police, City Manager, Murmer, and Alderman, thank you for having us. This informational presentation, we're honored to be here. Just like to introduce our individuals here from Fenton who are here. Mr. Bruce Martin, come on up too, Mr. Martin. He is our CSBO, Chief School Business Officer, and we have two students here, Sarah and Victor. So we'll start off with our students here to talk a little bit about the referendum.
Hello, my name is Victor Hruska. I'm a sophomore at Fenton High School, and I live in Bensonville. I am currently on the Fenton chess team and on the National Honor Society. I think that the referendum is important, not only for us, but for future students that will be attending Fenton High School, because I think that the aging facility that we currently have is holding back students from achieving their full potential, both in class and in extracurricular activities. For example, our classes are way too small, which isn't a good thing during a time where we have COVID-19. And plus, the lack of proper ventilation makes some classrooms really hot, which makes it hard to focus during class. Additionally, sports teams at Fenton, such as the soccer team and the baseball team, they have to practice and play their games at rental facilities, and the tennis team can't host tournaments, I think that the, can't host tournaments at Fenton. I think that the referendum will help solve these issues and will also create new opportunities for students by creating spaces that are dedicated to STEM, applied technology, and blended learning. Overall, I think that the referendum will create a facility that will meet current standards and that will allow students to achieve achieve success both in class and in extracurricular activities. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Guerrero, and I'm a sophomore, and I live in Bensonville. I'd like to think that I'm pretty heavily involved at Fenton. I was told to name some things. So I'm a member of the band. I'm in the marching band, the pep band, the jazz band, and I'm a trumpet section leader. I'm also captain, a captain of the tennis team, and I'm the boys' manager. I write for the Signal newspaper, and I'm class president and a member of the student council. I'm on the speech team and the group interpretation team, and on some committees that Mr. Antenko here always invites me to, and so I'm, you know, all over the school. One of my first dreams when I first moved to Fenton was, and this is something that I achieved at Blackhawk, was I wanted to explore every single room at Fenton. Kind of, you know, get to know the school, get to know where I was going to be learning. And I was able to do that three years into Blackhawk, but once I got to Fenton, it was really easy to manage in about four weeks? I don't know. It's a small building, and I was given the opportunity to explore through the different extracurricular activities and through the different opportunities presented to me. I think the referendum is really important, because as a member of the speech team and the tennis team, I'm able to travel to different schools and get to see tons of different facilities that are offered to other students in other towns. Kind of speaking on the not being able to host tennis tournaments. I remember it was our homecoming this year, and we didn't have enough courts open at our tennis team or available to play at, just because our courts are always flooded and cracked. So we had to travel all the way down to the Glenn Bards, and we didn't come home until 6:00 PM, and homecoming started at 7:00. It was really difficult to manage, and that was just something hard for us. You know, it's hard for us to practice. It's hard for us to really get involved. I know the boys and girls soccer teams can't host or play at our own school, so they have to travel. And there's just tons of different scenarios where that's possible. The band room is kind of gross as we think about the whole fact that it's a really old room and instruments and, you know, different things that we do with them, like spit all over the floors isn't something too pleasant to think about, but it's also just really small and really cramped. The referendum would also include a turf field, which would be so much easier to practice as we lost, I think, three to four practice days this year because of the rain. It was unsafe for us to practice, and there have been accidents just because it's not somewhere safe for us to be. My mom actually graduated from Fenton in 1997, and she can walk through Fenton recognizing every inch of the school just because not enough has been done to further improve the facilities. I know not even 48 hours after the referendum was discussed at a board meeting in February, March, a pipe burst, and we were forced to not stay at school that day. That was also the day before the group interpretation sectional competition, where we were concerned that we wouldn't have the opportunity to practice, and that was a state qualifying event. And we ended up being able to practice, but it was a four-hour practice, and no bathrooms were available. So there's just so many aspects to the school that this referendum hurts or improves to what we've been hurting with, and I think that this will benefit many years to come, you know. My mom went here, and now she had to kind of go through these things as I'm going through them, and maybe one day I'll be back, and my children, I want my children to benefit from the referendum, so. Thank you.
All right. Aren't they fantastic? Just real quick here, Fenton High School, as you guys know, Wood Dale students, Wood Dale high school students, this is their public school when they go to high school. I think you guys are all aware of that. All of our students become successful, passionate, empowered learners. Our kids are striving. Your kids are striving, okay, whether it's from Bensonville or Wood Dale. We have had eight state champions in the last five years. We were AP District of the Year, which is a national award. That means AP is basically college courses at the high school level. Out of the tens of thousands of high school, Benson, Fenton was that, was the AP District of the Year. Our graduation percentage is at the 90 percentile, or as well as our attendance, and we graduate our kids in four years, okay, which is very tax-appropriate. We don't keep our kids for fifth or sixth year, so they're thriving there. But there's just one significant obstacle, which the students have discussed a little bit, that we just can't overcome, the lack of space in our aging school building. We may do with our 1950s building. Our building is 72 years old, if I did my math, yep, 72 years old. So it's on Medicaid, it's on Medicare in so many ways. It's a 19s building. And but our second-grade facilities are keeping our students from reaching their full potentials. Our infrastructure has been extended well beyond its lifetime, okay? Mechanical system, plumbing, and electrical system, the basics. Systems needs to be addressed to keep the building safe and healthy. The pipe bust three weeks ago right happened, happened right in front of our school where the school buses are parked. We had to close the school down. Not only is the building above ground old, but also the stuff underneath. Our classrooms and learning areas are too small and outdated. Our average classroom size is about 750 square foot. The average size for modern classrooms are anywhere from 1,000 to 1,200 square feet. So we're way beyond the smaller size, and you could tell this is a 1950s school. Here's our band room here. It's a way to insulate and keep sound, acoustics in appropriate, appropriate level. We have to put carpet docks on the wall as well as on the floor. And what Sarah was talking about, usually when you play a wind instrument, you guys know where that, where the saliva goes in many, many ways. We keep it as clean as possible and healthy as possible, but it's time for a change. Our safety system is also very old. It's in the 1980s and 90s. Flooding, just like Wood Dale, it's same thing at Fenton. We do have a problematic issue there with flooding, as you could see. If you're on Grove Street looking down at Fenton, there's a nice slope, six-feet slope. All the water comes to our property. What does that cause? Cracking on our fields, cracking on inside, whether it's interior or exterior. Pictures of our football in our stadium, as well as our fieldhouse. The airflow is inconsistent with some kids sweating in one room and other freezing in another. The smell in our science and social studies wings is notorious. This holds our students and teachers back in academics and extracurricular. I mean, just imagine if we have other high school, other high school facilities at Fenton and what we could do in regards to academics as well as extracurricular. It creates significant safety concerns for everyone in our school. It packs our students to classrooms that were way too small even before COVID. And some of this, our sports team, which our students discuss, like soccer, baseball, tennis, can't even compete at home. We try to be the cornerstone of our community, whether it's Bensonville or Wood Dale. During the COVID crisis, we were the first city, that's Wood Dale and Bensonville, to give out free vaccine shots. We did it 16 times. Over 6,000 individuals in both communities were given vaccination for free using our facilities. And also during the pandemic, we have given out free 300,000, 300,000 free meals when our kids were not at school. And when folks forget, kids get hungry, whether they're in school or not at school. It's over 300,000. We also give food pantries on a, in a yearly basis. So we try to help out our community as well. That's why our community came together in comprehensive community engagement process over the past year, working together and sharing ideas and passions. We created a roadmap for the future of Fenton. The community-driven 129.7 million plan to renovate, modernize, and expand Fenton High School will now appear on our ballot to approve as a referendum in the upcoming election on June 28th, 2022. If the referendum is successful, we will be able to renovate our school to make it safer for students and teachers, improve our programming and career learning spaces, and modernize our classroom for the 21st century learning. Just while, really want to pick that last bullet point apart. When we talk about 21st century learning, we're talking about the 2020s, 2030s, 2040s, 2050s. When the building was built, it was really for the curriculum for jobs in the 1950s, 60s, 70s, 80s, okay? We need modern facilities for the modern jobs. Here's how the community would look like this, what we came up with. We're going to touch everything in the building, whether it's exterior as well as interior, new science wing for STEM, the engineering, the programming, the high-paying jobs that our kids deserve. They need to have that experience in our school before they go to a two-year college or to a work or to a four-year college and so forth. Here's how it would look like. These are our future renderings. And right here, real quick, is at the bottom, it's what we have right now and what we hope to offer for our students for generations to come, for generations to come. We have not asked for a referendum since 1975, okay, 1975. So that's a good 42 years ago. So we need our facilities to look like what's on top and not in the 1950s. Science will be touched with STEM, okay, computer science, engineering, CTEs, our athletic field. Wouldn't that be nice to drive down 83 and to see a field like that? It will be a destination district, right, a destination town, both for Wood Dale and Bensonville. It's really time for this. We can create an even safer and more secure environment in our school building through updated security system, doors and windows monitoring, electric door locks, and a storm shelter to take care of the flood. We will take care of the flooding, the plumbing, the bathrooms, the sprinklers, the basic stuff. We will improve our programming and career learning spaces so each and every student continues to have the opportunity to succeed in anything they choose. We're looking at STEM, applied tech, culinary, not home, not home ec. We want our kids to be chefs. Construction, health science, biomed, special education, skills building. And we will be able to modernize and expand our classroom. They will give us the 21st century of learning spaces with modern features to effectively implement current and future curriculum, facilitate collaboration, and allow more individuals in small groups instruction. Additional and larger classroom will provide more space for student collaboration, small groups, curriculum growth, and so forth. With improved and safe facilities, our students will perform better. We know they will perform better, okay? They have their newfound sense of pride with a new building that comes with attending a 21st century learning environment, not in 1950s. And just like other schools in DuPage, whether it's District 88, whether it's Elmers, whether it's Lake Park, whether it's Downers, and so forth, they all have new facilities. It's our turn. They'll reach their full potentials through blended learning, STEM, extracurricular, and sports. They'll have more opportunities to follow their passion, graduating healthier, more rounded, and ready for high-wage paying jobs and careers. Every year, the improvement needed at our school becomes more expensive, okay? And this runs contrary to our efforts to make our district more fiscally responsible. We've known from last year to this year, prices went up 12%. So if we prolong this any longer, the price would not be $130, $30 million for a referendum. It'll be in the 200s. We've taken important steps to control spending and ensure as much money as possible goes into our classroom and students. This is a building referendum. It's not a salary referendum, okay? This goes straight for the building. Fenton has the lowest bond and interest fund rate among high school district in DuPage and an overall tax rate that is significantly lower than the state average. We've been good with tax dollars. Our kids deserve the same opportunities once again, to be competitive with other schools in DuPage County, and I listed those schools. This plan will help us develop together to provide a safe 21st century learning spaces for all of our students. I'll pause there if there's any questions, but once again, thank you so much. Once again, this is an information presentation so that you hear from us, so there's no misinformation what's coming out of Fenton. Once again, it's a building referendum. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Alderman Messina, you have a question?
Yeah, it was actually on behalf of one of my own residents who actually is in the Fenton School District. How, so let's say this $127 million referendum were to come to us. You're aware that there are two other, at least two other schools, high schools that actually roll into Wood Dale as well?
Yes.
So how would we respond to that ask, because it seems to be the trend. Now the fire district got their referendum passed. Now it's you guys. Maybe next, you know, next year it'll be Addison Trail, then it'll be Lake Park. So how do you, how do we mitigate that? What?
I think everyone should tell their story, and this is our turn for Fenton to tell our stories. Like what I laid out, we could wait until the next round when it would be appropriate. There isn't really an appropriate time to ask. It's just, our school is just run down. It's a 1950s building. Are we going to wait until it's truly 100 years old, right? It's 72 years old. I know it's a challenge for taxpayers, but here's our chance to tell our stories. We're telling the resident, hey, look, our school is falling apart. We got the basic, basic problems, heating, cooling, air, safety, flooding. I think you guys could understand that living in Wood Dale with all the water issues there as well. But Alderman, it's just to, we're here to tell our story and let you know our needs. We want to stay competitive. I think a thriving Wood Dale needs a thriving high school, state-of-the-art high school to compete. And once again, to be a destination district and a destination town.
Okay, before, before I ask for any more questions, just to clear up. So if you're in the Fenton School District, that's the only school district you're in, Addison Trail. So our residents don't pay taxes to three high school districts, just in case anybody's watching got confused. Want to make sure everybody understands that. My, I know I'm going to get this question. So if the referendum passes, how much per 100,000 is that dollar amount? Because I know I'm going to get the questions, and I'd like to have an answer.
Great question, fair question. So we do have a tax calculator on our website, so we would encourage folks to go to that and put in the value of your home. And it's already, you know, set up, you can, for default boxes such as exemptions and things like that. You can certainly change that and put any amount in of the value of your home. So for example, we use a $229,000 home that's based on the US Census.
Okay.
Number, and that's about $395. Yeah.
For a $229,000?
$229,000 home, yes, so.
Okay. Now, I know I'm going to get that question. I want to make sure I have an answer.
We certainly would expect you to get that, yes.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Follow-up, Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Are you, do you publish the, do you publish the spread of where your students are? Because disproportionately, our ward, one of those homeowners living right there, we disproportionately pay the highest amount of property taxes. And because our kids feed into Fenton, feed into all the Bensonville schools, we've kicked, we scream. Not for you. You guys are phenomenal. But Park District's all that, and I'm getting pummeled, pummeled, because you, the average house in Bensonville is probably 229. The average house in Wood Dale is probably, I'd argue, 359, right? Maybe 400. In my subdivision, probably 600. So they're getting hammered. Average house in my subdivision went up 450 with the firemen's, you know, referendum that passed. So take that number, times it by probably two and a half, if not three.
1200.
We're down about another $900, you know, and most of these people in our Royal Oaks and Woodside, they don't have kids that feed into Fenton, and I'm worried that that's going to just have people bolt and leave. And so it's the real concern. I love what you do. You know, I'm a huge fan of you, Superintendent, and what you guys have done. It's just, I hope you have a great narrative to tell those folks on my side that don't have kids that are getting pummeled with property taxes.
Well, one thing to help mitigate.
Go ahead.
Costs to taxpayers, you know, we would phase in, we're not going to issue bonds right away. We're going to issue them as the work is, requires us to, you know, issue the bonds. So we don't see, if something, if it were to pass in June, we don't see anything happening for at least a year on tax bill. So that's, that's first of all. I guess the other thing in terms of across the communities, our tax rate is the tax rate. So we, you know, we, that's, and typically, school districts, you know, we make up the bulk of the tax bill. That's just how, you know, schools are funded in Illinois, through property taxes. We're sensitive certainly to the cost of what people are paying. We look at it as an investment. We'll do everything we can to mitigate it. We'll, you know, strive for the highest bond rating we can possibly get. We're at the second highest rating right now with Moody's. We want to get to the top. So any of those types of things that we can do to control it. And the other thing is, I guess, our maintenance cost will go down dramatically with this, if this were to happen, because, you know, that investment just isn't going to be as large as it, as it has been. And quite honestly, it hasn't kept up to the level that needs to be, because, you know, it's an older facility, and you can only, you know, devote so many funds, operating funds to maintenance. So we see that going away, you know, quite a bit dramatically.
Alderman Sismarsky, you were next.
A two-pronged question, I guess. You know, with the, with people buying out our properties, our Mohawk Manor, Blackhawk Manor, O'Hare taking part of the eastern part of Fenton, where did the number 129 come from, based on your population?
The 229?
Or no, the, the 129 million dollars?
Yeah, that was based on the projects through community feedback, through our facility assessment, which was done initially, that's through community feedback and support groups and informational groups, identifying the projects and prioritizing, you know, mechanicals. Life safety improvements were a huge piece that needed to be addressed in these other areas, you know, from classrooms, as Mr. Antengo said, to, you know, improvements in the arts and things like that.
Is there anywhere, is there anywhere for the local citizen to see line item bases for where you come up with the $129 million? What, where the costs are all going?
There's pretty detailed.
You can say it all day long by a picture, but I want to know, we have to balance a budget every year in this town? And this line item?
Fair enough.
Where is all the?
All the, I don't know if it's line by line, but there's far more detailed information on our website. I don't know if it's itemized by every single item, but it certainly would be itemized by groups. For example, the life safety, the classroom modernization, you know, the academic wings, the STEM program, classrooms and things like that. So it's, it's a, we encourage you all to go there. There is, you know, numerous copious amounts of information, I would say, available to you and residents.
One last question.
Go ahead, follow.
What's the current attendance there?
Attendance?
What's the, what's the population of the school?
Our enrollment is about 14, 1473 is the enrollment.
Versus past numbers you don't have?
It's gone down modestly over the last couple of years.
Go ahead, since I've been there, just while I ask that question.
Alderman Jacob, you were next.
Yeah, a couple of questions. You had mentioned that you're going to be expanding the school. So what is the current square footage, and how large is the school going to be after the expansion?
Right now, it's about 300,000 square feet. And in terms of the additions, it depends on, you know, what, what is actually finalized. You know, the drawings aren't, you know, finalized yet. They're, they were.
They're, they would, it wouldn't happen until after the election. But probably, what did I say, 50,000 square feet, depending on, you know, how the classroom numbers that we add or the arts area that we add on to as well.
Okay. And then, based, based on Alderman Sismarski and Alderman Messina's question, like, our ward does have a lot of empty nesters, and since the school popul, you know, it's been going down. With that trend, is it wise to make a larger school or to add square footage? I understand the remodeling of it, but
Go ahead.
As far as the trend of students.
Academically, from an educational point of view, it does. Once again, our square footage per classroom is smaller than the norm. We know that the curriculum has changed from 1950s to the 2021, like, for example, culinary STEM. It's a little bit different to the sign of, the type of science experiments you run now. You're, you're putting robotics in there. You're putting cars and trucks inside your building, so we do need that extra space to carry out our curriculum. The curriculum has changed, learning has changed, it takes more space.
Any follow-up? Alderman Sorrentino, go ahead.
You know, I can't understand that we have one thing in common, myself and Fenton. We're both born in the same year. So I'm 72 as well as Fenton is. I just can't understand how it got to the point where it is, has there not been, this brought forth way earlier? I mean, I'm 72, I go for preventative healthcare and all this other stuff.
Right.
These pictures are deplorable.
They are. I asked that question when I took the, the job as well.
So you inherited this?
I inherited this. And it, I think it's, it's, we could tell us that you guys are elected official, there's some politics behind it, and there's fears like what you have shared right now. Which leader, superintendent, board, will take on that challenge? I think there was a lot of fear, I mean, about it. That's, that's my take as a superintendent. The reason why I'm doing this is because it's the right thing to do, perhaps. I'm not going to judge the superintendents before me or the board before me. There were definitely certain fears, kind of like what we face today, whether it's from the taxpayers or, or the growth and, and, and anything that's referendum-related, it's, it's dangerous, whether it's job security for us administrators or, or elected official as well. So I think that's a true reality. I'm with you. It should have been taken care of in the 1970s, and the 1990s, and 2010, and 2022. But it's our watch now. We're not going to judge what happened. It's, we're here just to, you know, spread the gospel and say, hey, look, this is our story. It's going to be up to the voters. Vote your conscience. There's, we're not going to sway folks here, but let us tell our stories of what's happening there so you guys and people who are watching know exactly what's there at our school.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Yes, I do. You mentioned the last referendum was 1975.
Yes, sir.
What was the result of that and what was the amount that they were seeking and what did they do with the money?
Okay. Do not
I know it was well before your
Yeah, we know it's, it's the fieldhouse as well as the auditorium. I do not, it's the fieldhouse, the 1975 fieldhouse and the 1975 auditorium. They're all severe
A lot to do with academics.
Nothing to do. It's basically performance and, and sports facilities, extracurricular.
Alderman Jacob, you had a follow-up?
Go ahead.
The renovation that was done, I don't know, three, five years ago, what was the cost of that and where did the money come for, for that?
Sure. That was about 13 million dollars, and it really focused more on the entryway, cafeteria, some school offices, flooring. We added some classrooms off the cafeteria. Those are the, probably the key areas. That was, as I said, about 13 million dollars. That was paid for a combination of non-referendum bonds and some fund reserves as well. About three or four million dollars in reserves and then the rest moves in bonds. So that, overall, the district has very little debt, and that, that would be it.
Alderman Sismarski, your hand up again.
There's just one question for my residents out there. For 129 million, couldn't I build a brand-new school instead of rehabbing something that you guys say is 72 years old? I mean, 129 million is a lot of money. I, I mean, for me, to me, I, I would think you could build a brand-new school and get rid of that. You have plenty of, and that, obviously, you've already said it, your soccer teams don't play there, your football teams, nobody plays there. They play at Redmond, they play at other fields. They don't even utilize our property. There's a lot of property taxpayers are paying for that's just sitting there vacant now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start out. I think our superintendent wanted to say some more about that. But as far as the building itself, building a new building, we did explore that opportunity, possibility, I should say, with our architects and, and some other, you know, construction officials. Our best bet, our best value was to, it would just be too out of sight in terms of the cost to build from the ground up a brand-new facility. And the other thing, I guess, would be, where do you put the kids? If you tear down a building, where do they go, you know, for those two years or whatever it takes to build the building? So I think those were the, you know, things that inhibiting, things that played into it in terms of avoiding that. The cost would have been greater than renovation, even though this seems like a lot of money. A, a new building would have been even more for a, a modernized high school with about the same size and slightly more bigger than what we have now. And, and where do you, where do you build, is the other piece.
Well, there's plenty of property there.
Mr. Ontango, do you have a follow-up to that or?
No, it's the same issue, but it's more expensive.
Got it. All right. Well, thank you for your time, and I'm sure we'll start getting a lot of questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does that conclude your report, Mr. Murmish?
Indeed, it does.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. If no objections, we have three items on the consent agenda. Do I have any objections? Do I have any objections?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We've got about four seconds.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Alderman Ames? Yes. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Yes. And that passes. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the items. On the agenda, item number one, a request to approve the purchase of Microsoft Server 2022 data center addition and all related client access licenses in the amount of not to exceed $29,944. Item number two, a request to approve the purchase of 70 laptops, 70 docking stations, 20 desktop PCs and associated cables in amount not to exceed $137,469.17. Item number three, a request to approve the purchase of an additional node for the city's hyper-converged cluster from Heartland Business Systems in the amount not to exceed $41,533.71. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Ames? Yes. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Woods?
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Sismarski?
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Messina?
No report, mayor.
Go ahead.
Approval pay request number two, final, the Sewer Tuck LLC for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 sewer cleaning and televising program in the amount not to exceed $12,989.68. That would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Ames? Yes. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes.
And that concludes my report, mayor.
Thank you. Under finance administration, Alderman Catalano?
I have three, mayor. A resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wooddale and the Wooddale Park District for the city temporary use of park district property for the city 2022 Perry Fest. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? We don't need a roll call on this, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Next is a resolution authorizing the execution of, of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wooddale and the Wooddale School District 7 for the city temporary use of the school district property for the city's 2022 Perry Fest. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And last is a request to approve the purchase of 18 urban vases in the amount of not, not to exceed $6,566. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Sorry, one question.
Alderman Sismarski?
He's replacing all the tan, concrete-colored ones around City Hall?
Go ahead, Mr. Murmish.
Yeah, that is correct. This will be various sizes, 18. They were all vetted out at Streetscape Committee for the locations and the style, and they did bid out the prices as well to get the lowest price amount. Also, you may wonder why we're bringing a $6,566 expense to council. Usually, my spending threshold is, is above that, but as tradition for the Streetscape Committee, since they're an advisory board, we bring all their expenditures to council. They have a budget of $10,000 in this year's fiscal budget.
Go ahead, follow.
Do we have any secondary uses for these other bases? Can we use them anywhere else in town?
Probably, I know Assistant Director Hastings here. I didn't know if they had already allocated where these would go. He could speak to that. I do not know.
Going to be used, reused?